I'd like to call to order the Crystal City Council meeting for September 17th. We'll start with roll call.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Idbo.
Here.
Councilmember Kamish.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember Onessa Rosen.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda before us. I have one item I'd like to pull from the consent agenda. That would be the last one, which pertains to some expense, so we're going to pull anything with expense off. So 4-6 will be added to the front of the regular agenda. Looking for a motion on...
Just one clarification. It's actually to apply for a grant for the expense to use the funds. So it can still be pulled and we can discuss it. I just wanted to clarify that.
All right. I'd still like to pull it regardless. All right. Looking for a motion on the agenda? Tracy?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, looking for a second. Therese?
I'll second that.
All right. Favorit, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay. Motion carries. All right, we have our proclamation today. I'll read that into the record. The proclamation is in reference to Constitution Week, and that is September 17th to the 23rd, 2024, whereas September 17th, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary for the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution Convention, and whereas the Constitution provides the framework of and for the government with set principles that guarantee citizens certain rights, freedoms, and responsibilities, and whereas the Constitution further outlines the power of the federal government and leaves other matters to state government, ensuring that the government remains accountable to its citizens, and whereas it is fitting to officially recognize the Constitution and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas to honor the principles outlined in the Constitution, the United States Congress by joint resolution on August 2nd, 1956 requests that the President shall proclaim the week between September 17th and the 23rd each year as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Mayor of Crystal, do hereby proclaim September 7th to the 23rd, 2024 as Constitution Week in the city of Crystal. I encourage residents to study the importance of act of citizenship and the strength of our Constitution dated the 17th day of September, 2024. All right. Next, we have the consent agenda. I'll read that into the record at this time. First item is approval of meeting minutes, and the first one is for the work session on September 3rd and the council meeting from that same date. Approval of the list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council that is on file in her office. Adoption of a resolution authorizing an agreement to maintain stormwater ponds, pond areas at 6203 36th Avenue North. That's the creek edge townhomes. Adoption of a resolution authorizing a grant agreement between the Minnesota Department of Public Safety for the 2024 and 2025 Multicultural Driver Education Program. Next is the adoption of a resolution authorizing the grant agreement with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety for 2024 to 2025 towards zero death enforcement program. That is our consent agenda. Looking for a motion on that one. Go ahead, David?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, looking for a second. Therese?
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay. Motion carries. All right, we do have open forum next. This is an opportunity for people to address the council and the general public, as this is televised. We allow 10 minutes per topic, 3 minutes per person. By rule, we don't take any action for anything brought before us. These are items we can discuss further in future work sessions or council meetings. So with that, I do have one person wishing to speak. Mark Hoffman, could you please approach? State your name and your address, and you can let it rip.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Mark Hoffman. I live in 3307 Zane Avenue North, and I've lived down there for 48 years. I'm here tonight to just, I guess, bring up my dissatisfaction with the proposed budget at 16%. I kind of watch everybody as this goes along, and the highest rate I've seen so far this year is Minneapolis at 8.1%. So, you know, half of our budget, and they've seen them go as low as 3... ...about where we're going. And it sounds like we have some deeper problems, and it might be a four or five-year fix to get there. And that bothers me quite a bit. You know, I feel right now we've had a, you know, we've got a spending problem and a planning problem to be going after a 16% increase. The 16%, whenever we do a tax, I call it forever tax, because basically it's not going to get reduced. And I think with a two-year budget with 16% each year, you know, you don't think of it right now, but it's 16% this year, next year, this year 16% is in the budget automatically, and we're going to add another 16%. So in two years, you're raising our taxes 48%. As you keep extrapolating that, if we go out, you know, four or five years, we're talking in, you know, double percents, you know, hundreds of percents. So, I mean, it's a pretty drastic number. If you make a chart and look at it, it compounds every year, and you usually don't get rid of it. What kind of steered me, I've been thinking about this for a year. Last year, I think it was up about the same time, and we had the talks on, somebody mentioned one of the council members that we had a problem with the general fund, and that we had to replenish it. And that bothered me a little bit, so I've, I think we need, in my mind right now, that's probably the biggest problem with the budget, is how are we going to get the general fund back to what it is? And I have no idea how low it is, but I'm assuming it's millions of dollars, you know, not hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think we need transparency. If you want to ask for a 16% increase, you've got to tell us exactly what it's for. I'm going to make some, just suggestions that are my thoughts only. I can't confirm them. Hopefully you'll confirm, and it's going to be part of transparency. You know, I believe a good, I believe probably everything that's missing from the reserve fund was used to build our new buildings, because I don't know how else you're going to use that kind of money. The money was there for a reason. It's in case we can't afford to pay our bills every six months. And that's how it was set up, and I'm fairly familiar with it. And I don't know how we paid for the buildings without using the reserve fund. You know, I could be wrong. That's why I'm going to ask for a, you know, I think we should have a review of the two buildings, you know, on the financials on it. How did we pay cash for these two buildings? I know the first building, we had, you know, quite a bit of cash stashed away, but it wasn't enough to do it. And the second, you know, the police department had some, and we got about $6 million of state and federal money, but, you know, it still leaves $10, $10 million or better. So, you know, I think we have needed tangent of what the finances were, you know, where the money came from and how it was paid for. And also, how did we lose money out of the general fund? I mean, where was that money used? It's not free for all. Done?
Yep.
Okay, I'm just going to say...
You had a couple extra seconds. We gave you quite a bit more.
Okay. I just want to say, I think you're in a rough position right now with what the budget is. Probably 30 seconds. To me, what you're fighting right now is what we fought in 2008, when the governments fell apart, the banking industry fell apart, and, you know, at that point, as a city, that was out of the city's control. This 16% is under the city's control. I mean, you people up sitting there are the ones that decided to spend this money. And you decided how to spend it. So I really like to see a rectification. I mean, I'll keep coming back, and I'll put in a form of proposal, really. And, you know, if I'm not happy, I go to the newspapers and start, because something's going on. I mean, 16% does not fit into the world in today's economy, other than we're spending too much. That would be the only reason. So reduce that budget by quite a bit. You know, if it matched Minneapolis, I'd be happy.
Thanks, Mark. Just for your information, all these discussions have taken place in public meetings. All the detail has been presented, so you can go look back on the internet. You can see the meetings that we had. There's an awful lot of things that go into it. It's not one thing, so it's quite complex. So thank you for your comments then. Thanks for your comments. We can't hear you, so just stay there, please. You're done. All right. Anybody else wishing to speak during open forum? Anyone else wishing? All right. At this time, I'll close open forum. In the regular agenda, we have dispersments of $25,000. I'll read those into the record at this time. No, wait. I got to go to the 4-6, the item that we took off the consent agenda. So that one is in relationship to applying for a grant at Hennepin County. Is it, John's not here, is he?
He's online.
Oh, he's online. I can, I guess depending on the question, I'm happy to... Well, the question is, you know, just like when we apply for a safer grant, or something like that, we apply for a grant, it comes with strings. We have to pay $5,000 to participate in that. That's how it was outlined. So indeed, we do have to spend some money in it. I'm kind of done spending money for the pool. I've had it.
This is for ADA, though. This is an important part of our pool structure.
We have ADA, don't we? We have one?
We do. It's 20 years old. It's actually in the long-term plan for replacement. So I can give you a little bit of the background on how this came about, because it was kind of a late ad. As you saw in the memo, the grant application, which we've applied for the last two years and received grants for parks, the, we didn't have a project in line for next year that was ready to apply for. This was in, this actually just came up last week. We were trying to decide what to apply for, for this next round of funding. And again, it's a grant application. It's not a...
Well...
I wasn't trying to correct you. I was just wanting to make sure it was understood, that we weren't actually purchasing it.
I do understand that. The point being is, we keep approving things that are being added on, added on, added on. Take it out of the contingency. I mean, that's already been approved. I don't want to approve any more money. It's not that I'm against ADA. That's not it at all.
Well, this wasn't part of the, Mayor, this wasn't part of the replacement funding. So this was something that was in the long-term plan, that in the next couple of years, that we weren't replacing right now. But so we were going to apply for a grant, to be able to apply for the grant, just to be able to...
To replace it?
For the third year. To replace the equipment. So that was the thinking.
Okay. Again, we keep moving more and more forward. We keep spending more and more on this project, and my frustration has been exceeded quite some time ago. It's just what I wanted to talk about. That's how I feel about it. So with that, any other comments or questions? Yeah, go ahead. We're going to vote on this, correct? Correct. Yes. Okay. I have nothing to add. All right. Looking for a motion. Anybody want to? Go ahead.
I move a resolution authorizing an equipment grant application to the Hennepin County Youth Activities Grant to assist in replacing the mobile pool lift at the Aquatic Center.
All right, thank you. Looking for a second, John?
I second that motion.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay? Nay? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Idbo.
Aye.
Councilmember Kamish.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Onessa Rosen.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Nay.
Motion carries, 6 to 1.
All right. So first item on the original agenda is dispersments of $25,000 or greater. We have a short list.
This is all of it?
This is all of it.
I can't believe...
North glass and glazing for replacement windows for the police department, $57,875. IRS electronic payments for federal FICA withholding for payday 8/30/2024, $71,413. Health Partners, Inc. for September health insurance premiums, $139,821. Total dispersments for this meeting is $269,109.55. Questions on any of those items from the council? Therese?
I don't have any questions, but it's sure nice to see you at such a light month.
Okay. It's kind of a timing thing.
Yeah.
We'll pay for it later. Go ahead.
I did have a question, and forgive me if I missed it, but why are the windows being replaced at the...
Our chief is approaching. Reverend, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Councilmember Idbo, I'm not sure if you were at that meeting back in, it was probably two to three months ago now, where we came to, all of you asked you for this money, because at the time when the police department was built, the incorrect windows were installed.
I mustn't have missed that. And why are we paying for it and not the contractor?
Because, that's a great question.
That is a great question.
Because it was for security purposes, the windows are. And do you remember me talking about that?
Maybe, I don't know.
Yeah.
Been crazy somewhere.
Yeah. So it was for security reasons why the windows were installed, and there was a miscommunication when we were installing the windows that were installed in the building.
Okay. So it was a contract writing here?
Yep.
Okay. Gotcha.
All right.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tajee.
So just to be clear, that error is on us? Like we, that's why...
No.
Oh.
I mean, well...
Well, who wrote the contract?
Well, here's the thing. We had multiple meetings on this with the architect, and let's just say, I would say the error is on both of us. I wouldn't put the ownership completely on us.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Tajee.
I just have a point of clarification generally. So when we see these dollar amounts, have these funds already been dispersed? Or are we approving the dispersment of these funds?
You're approving the dispersment of those funds.
Okay.
Some of them have been, the costs have been incurred, such as like the payroll taxes, things like that. But, and anything over $25,000 will be listed on here. So you may have already, like ballistic windows, which were voted on months ago, but we haven't received the invoice until recently, so then those are now one of the payables. So council rules require them to be listed here.
Thank you. All right. Any more questions? Seeing none, looking for a motion. Go ahead, Therese.
Make a motion to approve expenditures over $25,000.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a second. David?
I will second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay? Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is to consider a resolution on municipal consent for the Blue Line extension. Our community director, or development director, John Sutter, is here to address the council. John, welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm going back to the August 20th slide show. I'm not going through the whole thing, if you really want me to. But there are, I think, three or four key slides from that that would be good for, kind of just as a refresher tonight about where we're, what this process is, what the issues are, and what the next steps are. So... So what is municipal consent? Basically, it's a state law that says that cities can take one of three actions regarding the preliminary design plans for a light rail transit project that passes through their city. Approval, which is the plans as submitted. No action, which kind of defaults to effectively an approval. And then disapproval, and in that action, the city must identify what changes to the plans would turn that into approval. And it also triggers a hearing in front of the Metropolitan Council, and they decide whether or not to make the city's changes. I want to emphasize, there is no provision in state law for a city to say no to a light rail transit project. That's not any power or authority that cities have been given by the state. So what is municipal consent not about? It's not about the debate about whether light rail transit is better or not as good as other forms of transportation. It's not about the cost effectiveness of light rail transit, and it's not about operational issues that aren't specifically design-related. Metropolitan Council and Hennepin County are the governmental agencies that are the decision-makers on those questions. So... In previous discussions, and the draft resolution that's in your packet tonight, we've identified five items that would be the subject of a disapproval resolution to be considered by the council. I won't go through all of these unless there are questions, because we've talked about them a lot. I will say that several of these items, we feel we are very close on having what we need as staff from the project to recommend that they don't need to be part of a disapproval resolution. But we're looking for some kind of documentation to, documentation of the conversations and the assurances we've been given verbally by the project team. However, and we don't have those yet, which is why the resolution that's in your packet tonight is the same disapproval resolution with all five of these items listed. The same one that you looked at on September 3rd. The issue that is still sitting out there, it's, I apologize for the difference in numbering, it's issue number one in the draft resolution. It's issue B on this slide. It's the poor condition of that old rural section of West Broadway in Robinsdale and Crystal, the Crystal segment being from 47th Avenue to Fairview Avenue. We are currently waiting for some, I don't want to say proposal, but something from Hennepin County that County Commissioner Lundey mentioned in the work session last week, that gave a preview that this, something would be coming from the county regarding that issue. We have not received that yet, and so for that reason, the staff recommendation tonight is that you continue consideration of municipal consent until your next meeting on October 1st, when we hope to have both that letter from Hennepin County, and have a chance to review it and share it with all of you for your own individual consideration, and also these other issues, to have sort of the final documentation that staff needs to feel comfortable removing them from a potential disapproval resolution for October 1st. So that concludes my comments. I'd be happy to answer your questions that the council has.
Questions from the council? Go ahead, John.
So this, we met with Commissioner Lundey. He told us that we were going to have some type of draft document yesterday, and so we haven't seen anything yet. We haven't had any communication from Commissioner Lundey or his office on this matter.
We have had communications with their staff, but we haven't seen the letter yet.
Okay.
Other questions?
Couple questions. I thought the water main on Robinsdale and 42nd that was going to be put in a box or something? It was going to be lined with concrete and not an elevated, something elevated over it?
Councilmember, that's one of the items that we would expect will not be, need to be in the final resolution.
Okay.
But we're, again, we just don't have kind of the written documentation of the conversations we have with the project.
Okay.
But we expect to have that by October 1st. In advance, well in advance of October 1st. So a different version of the resolution can go on your packet for that meeting. We just didn't have it in time for tonight's meeting.
So what we're deciding on right now is whether or not to put this vote off until October 1st, correct?
That is a staff recommendation, yes.
Well, if we vote on it, we can stop talking about it.
So, go ahead, David.
So it's my understanding you'd like us, or staff, what is recommending us to postpone the vote, because there are several updates on those five items that we were looking to see, and we'll get hopefully more info. We'll get a letter about helping us with the Broadway Avenue. So there's like updates on there that we could, staff will have more time to look at between now and October 1st?
Yes, that, we are asking you to continue this item to your next meeting on October 1st, because our staff's opinion is that by that time, this resolution will look different, because at least some of these items should be resolved by then, almost certainly will be resolved by then. And we don't know what the status of the West Broadway item will be at that time.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Adam.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just one thing I want to also note is the draft resolution that is before you tonight would need to be changed, even if when some of these items are met and satisfied, the whereas clauses would need to be modified. So there's changes to the resolution itself that we'll have to, we'll want to incorporate, you know, the assurances that we do receive on some of these items within the document itself. So, you know, it's not just deleting, you know, striking a line. There's more modification to it that we'll have to make when we get to that point.
My question is with the assurances. Will these be legally binding?
Mr. Mayor, as legally binding as we can make them. The idea is that, for example, on the snow plowing issue, that we would have, what we've asked for is a standalone, one pager, one paragraph, really, where they state that in lieu of acquiring sufficient property to provide boulevards for snow storage, that they agree to remove snow from this point to this point on this particular road. And they would, we would, that would be an exhibit to our resolution that we would reference in the whereas clauses. So calling that out as, again, that in lieu of property acquisition is the key phrase, because the alternative is to spell out in the, as a design item, that they need to buy the property and provide the boulevards.
Mayor, to directly answer your question, as John said, it's not going to be any more legally binding. It, I know the council and we've, staff have talked about a, you know, an approval resolution with conditions. That is still an approval resolution, and, you know, it's going to be up to the good faith of both parties to, you know, stand by those assurances. I don't want to say they're not worth anything, because it does give us legal grounds of what our expectation was in the future, should those terms not be met. But it is not, it is not a guarantee that anything will happen. I mean, it's the expectation. But it does give us some legal grounds. I think is, if I understand what you're ultimately asking.
Yeah. I think you hit it. It's just, I'm in the same place I was at the work session. It feels very similar to something we've experienced before. Other questions? All right, looking for a motion. Go ahead, John.
Make a motion to move, or...
Continue.
Continue. Continue the resolution regarding municipal consent for the Metro Blue Line extension to October 1st.
All right, looking for a second on that one. Go ahead, David.
I will second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay? Motion carries. All right. So our next council meeting is going to be Tuesday, October 1st at 7:00 PM, in the same location here at City Hall. Let's see. Reveal and short presentation of the Barway Collins statue will be at Becker Park on Saturday, October 5th, at 10:00 AM. Interesting date. All right. In the council meetings and work sessions, just a reminder that they're open to the public, and you can find them online, and you can view and listen to them in that location. That's at crystalmn.gov. Do we have any other announcements from the council? Seeing none? Looking for a motion?
Wait, wait.
Oh, whoa, 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 hold on, hold on.
The voting starts on 20th.
What does?
Early voting. We can start voting on Thursday, right?
Friday. Friday.
Friday, sorry.
All right. Any other announcements? Seeing none. John, you ready?
So moved.
Looking for a second. Therese?
I'll second it.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay? Motion carries. Does anybody need a break on the council? Let's roll right back.